Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting for February 23rd. It is 6:00 PM and we have a hybrid virtual and non-virtual city council meeting going on right now. So I will call our meeting to order and making sure my mic is on. I just told everybody to turn your mic on. And as I called the meeting to order, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Enroll call, please.
Mayor Ottega.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All seven members present.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into our presentations, I do want to take a moment. And I think hopefully most of the council has heard. Councilwoman Estes, her father just recently passed away. After battling some health conditions and they've been just, you know, working that whole thing and trying to, you know, make life comfortable for him and things. And passed away last week and I just wanted to, in honor of Ms. Estes and her family, just offer a moment of silence if you will indulge us for a few seconds here. Okay, thank you. And Ms. Estes, know that we're thinking about you and send our sympathies. And if anything, any of us can do for you, please let us know. And I'm sure we'd all be ready to, you know, help out in any way we can. This is a tough time and especially with everything going on. It's just hard to be able to connect with people in these times. But we're all thinking about you and your mom and the rest of the family. And hope you can get through this. You know, knowing he's in a better place and, you know, looking forward to seeing them again in the future. So with that, we will go ahead. Let me see on attendees. We have one person that's new. So Paul, if you don't mind, go ahead and do your spiel.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for joining us this evening. On the virtual, the virtual interface for the council meeting, you'll see a toolbar. If you only see the four buttons, click the orange arrow to open the user interface up to access the rest of the controls. All attendees' microphones are muted. There are two ways to communicate with the city council. One would be to raise your hand virtually by clicking on the hand button on your vertical menu bar. The other would be to type a question into the question pane in the attendee interface. If you are not connected to the web presentation, you will not be able to raise your hand or ask a question. To raise your hand, click on the hand button on your vertical attendee menu bar. When your hand is raised, the arrow will turn from green to red. A member of staff will call on you by the name you registered and will unmute you. To ask a question in the attendee pane, type the question to the city council and/or staff members. Staff will read the question out loud and direct it to the appropriate party. If the question pane is not visible, click on the orange arrow to open the attendee pane. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Paul. So we are going to move right into our presentations. We have item 4A. We're going to have a presentation on the new Beacon program with the police department. Chief, are you going to start us out on this one?
I'll turn over to Lieutenant Reynolds and Sergeant Ken Owens.
Okay. Please come forward.
I don't want to steal the show. I want you to hear from the troops. Come on. You're welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you so much for giving us the time to tell you about this program that we are so excited about. This has been in the works for us for almost a year. We've been working on it. So we're really excited that we're at the end stages of making this great program for our community a reality. I think we have a PowerPoint.
It's up.
Oh. Awesome. So I'm not going to read all the slides out to you out loud. I know I really dislike being read to because we're all adults and can kind of read it on our own. This just gives a basic breakdown of what the Beacon unit does, how it works, and where we're at in the process. Basically, Beacon is just partnering a law enforcement officer with a mental health clinician. That's a person who has a master's degree in social work and is a licensed social worker in the state of Colorado. And their goal is to respond to calls that behavioral health or mental health is a primary factor. We can go to the next slide. Partnered with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office, we are modeling our program directly off of their very successful program. We also have in with our program a case manager who will conduct follow-up on every mental health call to ensure our citizens are aware of resources in the community. Our office will be at the Old Beckett Event Center where El Paso County Health now has that. So we'll have a place for our officer and the clinician to work with desk computer, locking file cabinets, that kind of thing. Just want to show you some stats. These are from El Paso County. We don't have a lot of stats of us with Beacon because we haven't started our program yet. But kind of things I want to highlight on this. Ninety-nine percent of the mental health calls that they received in 2020, those calls that were handled by Beacon, ninety-nine percent were diverted from the jail. As in, they didn't have to make an arrest in order to either keep the peace or otherwise solve whatever situation they were in. The other thing I wanted to highlight on this is the forty, fifty-four percent treated in place. The cost savings in that for our citizens, they won't have to pay an ambulance bill. They won't have to pay an emergency department bill. They are treated in place wherever we find them. And then the 432 covered cars released back to patrol duties. When multiple officers respond to the scene of a 911 call, which is our usual protocol, if we get sent to someone who's maybe mentally ill, causing a disturbance, we're always going to send at least two cars. Beacon can release the responding officers to go back into service to do traffic enforcement, respond to other calls, emergency calls for service, citizen contacts, that kind of thing. And then it talks about the mental health hold. If they, if a person presents an immediate danger to themselves or others, that clinician can place them on an involuntary 72-hour mental health hold to get them the help that they need immediately. So those are just some couple of things that I wanted to highlight for you on that one. The Beacon team composition responsibilities, I won't read all of this to you, but it kind of breaks down where everyone is and what they do. One of the things I want to highlight for you is the FPD officer, who in this case is Sergeant Ken Owens. Ken has over, Ken has over 27 years in law enforcement. Eighteen of those years have been at the Fountain Police Department. He's been trained in crisis intervention training. He's also been the, what do you call the, no, when you train others, facilitator at CIT training. So he's training other people in crisis intervention. He's also a member of the crisis negotiations unit. He's our main negotiator for the City of Fountain. And he's also been working with El Paso County on their regional crisis negotiator unit. So Ken has the maturity, I'm not saying old, I'm saying the maturity.
Thank you.
You're welcome, boss. The maturity, the patience, and the experience to be our best option for this program. He was hand-selected. We interviewed a lot of people based on our knowledge and experience of each officer. And Ken was our best pick. So he's excited about it and he gets to stand here next to me for that. The other thing I wanted to highlight on this is the US, I'm sorry, the UC Health Case Manager. And again, that's who I talked to you about a little bit before. They are the ones that follow up on every mental health call that we go to. So they will follow up the next day. They get a report every day of the calls that occurred the day before. They will make a phone call to the client to see if they need any additional resources. And this is mostly if they are treated in place, which as you can see by the stats, fifty-four percent are treated in place. So they are able to follow up with them the next day and see if they need any continuing resources or if there's anything else that we can do to assist them. That just ends for us in better service to our community. You know, especially our police department, our customers, our citizens. And so that gives us better customer service. Go to the next one. The Beacon schedule, that's just going to be our initial schedule. And that's based on our calls for service, times and dates. The schedule can change based on the statistics for the calls for service. So it's flexible. It could change month to month. It could change quarter to quarter depending on what the calls look like. So where the majority of the mental health calls are, that's where we're going to try to schedule our Beacon unit. This is just how they receive calls for service. As you can see, they can self-assign when they see it. They can be dispatched to them. Other officers or fire units that are on scenes that believe it's a mental health issue can request the Beacon unit. And we can also get requests from other jurisdictions. Right now, it's just El Paso County, their South Districts, which integrate in and out with ours. And then also referrals after the crisis. And what that means is that if someone calls the police department because they need resources on A, B, or C, we're able to refer them to Beacon who can give them the resources that we may not have options to. So that's just kind of how that works. The next slide. Those are the types of calls for service Beacon will respond to. Generally, mostly they're going to be the suicidal check the welfares and the check the welfares, suicide attempts, completed suicides. All these other ones are disturbance, safe-to-tell, suspicious incident, those kind of things. The big thing I want to highlight here is a lot of our check the welfares will be on adults or children with disabilities such as autism, dementia, TBI, PTSD. We also have our home safe program, which I'm sure you're all aware of. We have files that we can keep on, like say you have a child with autism and they respond better to Tigger. We'll have that in their home safe program so that, packet so that we'll be able to use that to game rapport with whoever it is. So this will work hand-in-hand with that. It'll also help us with our military population and any military-related calls for service. So when they're dispatched to a disturbance and it turns out it's not a mental health call for service, the officer can still act as a police officer on that call and the clinician will stay in the car. Go to the next slide. So this is just kind of how it works. What to expect? The officer will always contact the individual first because there's a safety factor we need to keep in mind with the clinician. Once they de-escalate and create initial rapport with whoever the subject is, they will let the clinician know if they're safe to come inside. Then the clinician does their thing. And I'm not going to read all that to you. You guys can kind of look at that. But that's kind of the general gist of how it works. We're never going to send the clinician in without an officer and we'll never leave a clinician without an officer. So these are Fountain's mental health calls for service that we pulled from January 2020 to October 2020. As you can see, there's quite a few. That last number, I typed it out because it took me a minute to realize how much that was. It's 1,153 hours, 34 minutes, and 31 seconds. A lot of this time is spent right now and has been by our patrol officers or our fire folks. When Beacon could be on all these calls, this will really help us with getting our patrol units back into service. Again, that's a lot of time that, obviously Beacon can't take every call, but they're, they are not going to be looking for work. They're going to have plenty to do. So go to the next call. These are just our statistics show, and I'm sorry it's so small. I realized it was so small when I went back to look at it. But it just shows the, from January, we get sent these stats every month from the case manager. The day of week, mental health call volume, and this was just for January. And then the next slide is the time of day. So you can see that's kind of how we went from the ten, the ten in the morning to eight at night where, because it kind of picks up between four and five. And that's generally when people get home from work and things of that nature. So that's why, that's the plan now for the time. Next steps for our program. UC Health opened a job posting for the clinician on the 10th of this month. Myself and Sergeant Owens will sit in on the interviews held by UC Health as well as the El Paso County Beacon units that are already in place. Once they, once we decide who the best candidate is and the best fit for Fountain, we will conduct a background investigation on the selected candidate. The clinician goes through a four-week training program by UC Health. If you've seen the posting, the posting is for an actual mobile assessor. So it's not just for a social worker. It's actually for a mobile mental health clinician. So they know coming in that it's to be partnered as a co-responder with an officer. The clinician, FPD officer will hit the streets. Right now, we're hoping and keeping our fingers crossed for April, but it all depends on a hiring process through UC Health. And then the City of Fountain will be better equipped to assist our citizens in crisis. So again, we're just really excited about this program. We're excited about all the support that we've received from the city. I think this is an invaluable program and it will serve our citizens very well. Are there any questions I can answer? I know that was down dirty and I talk really fast, so I apologize. Are there any questions I can answer for anyone?
I would like to know if your clinician is not available and the sheriff's clinician is available. Are they working separate times?
Right now, El Paso County has two Beacon units and they are working on getting a third. So they have seven-day-a-week coverage right now. As it's, as it's been for the last year or so, they have come down and taken fountain calls when they're available. Sometimes they're up in Monument, so they can't make it down in time effectively. But they've been covering us. So we will also cover them when we're working, but we don't have 24-hour-a-day coverage at this point just because we don't have enough of the co-responder units.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I think this is really exciting and congratulations. I know we've talked about it and it's just always so exciting when you see something kind of fruition. And in government speed, this is, this is lightning. This is really fast. I just wanted to talk about, when I was on the Colorado Municipal League, there is a possible bill being written this year for a 911 grant program that would actually divert the calls to a Beacon-type officer at the 911 call center and potentially deal with it there, too. I think that's another strategy. We need to be really watching that bill and making sure that, that it moves along. My understanding is right now it's under CDPHD and they want to move it over to the public safety. So that's a big thing we need to keep an eye on. But that to me is exciting if you can get the person the help through the phone and the resources, that even saves us more time and money and officer time on the street. I mean, that's another piece we need to keep an eye on. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Excited for you.
You know, the, and I think I mentioned this in the last council meeting when it was coming up. And you know, with all the stuff that we've been through, you know, police-wise in the last year, you know, this is one of the big things that people are really asking for and begging for. And you know, like Ms. Thompson said, the fact that we're here at this point and we could say, yeah, we actually have something that's in response to that. I think that's, that's, that's a positive reaction to everything that's gone on. And, but the numbers and the data show that the need for this thing, it's not just a, wasn't a knee-jerk because a bunch of people were upset about something. It really was, we have the data to support something like this and we know it will be effective. And just that one stat alone where the diverting from the jail, I think for those people, probably immeasurable. You know, and my suspicion, I don't go out on these calls, so I don't know. But when you're ramped up already and then police show up and it just, that can further excite your anxiety, your anger, everything else. I think that's what really causes the jailing. And so if you have someone there who is better equipped to deal with those types of crises and allow the police, you know, to really focus on, we got to just keep everybody safe. But we'll let you, you know, process through that. I think that's, that's immeasurable. And I think people feel better for that in the end, too. You know, to keep anyone out of jail, I think is just awesome. And so, and not that you guys haven't done a great job with that already, but the reality is, and I think a lot of this has come out as well, that, you know, the police have like a million hats you have to wear when you respond to a call, that you have no idea what's happening. And so having that extra set of eyes that can, that can really just help situations and diffuse them. And I think it's going to be helpful for you all as well. And I'm excited about that. And thank you, Owens, for, you know, really kind of putting yourself out there to lead this charge. And Lieutenant, for, you know, kind of leading the effort here. But, you know, I'm excited. I told Chief this last time and it's come up the budget. Like this is a no-brainer, 100% slam dunk. Let's do this. Because I think our community is going to be better for it in the end. And, you know, hopefully it can grow as well. And we can have two or three maybe eventually down the road, too. And, and, you know, but I, you know, honestly, I think it's one of those things that's that important. And, and I think the proof will be in the pudding once we get to that point. But I thank you guys. This is exciting stuff and thankful for you all, too. I think that probably relieves a lot of stress as well for the patrol officers. And, and just those people have to respond. You know, you never know what's happening. You get a call and you know you have to be there. And, and we've got great people in that department that do the best they can. And you never know what's going to happen. So thanks, Chief, for doing all that and we're excited. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. I'd be really remiss, you know, we started this conversation literally sharing about a year ago. It was January a year ago. And it was right in the throes as a nation was dealing with some tough issues on, on how to change a culture and how to handle. And what's the role of the police officer and where, where are they good at? Where do they need help? You know, some of the things of talking about defund the police, the thing that stood out to me that brought us here tonight is, you know, cops wear so many hats. There's so many different expectations that we put a 21-year-old person in that maybe doesn't have a whole bunch of life experience themselves. And we really expect them to act with great wisdom, you know, and great life experience. And sometimes that's, that's not very viable. So, you know, we talked about it a year ago. We rolled our sleeves up. You know, I just want to give a shout-out to Missy Reynolds. You know, it was shortly after that council meeting that I gave her the task. She jumped into it, head in, started making contacts, brought Beacon down to the Fountain Police Department many times. Sam, that's where you saw the Beacon down here in Fountain, really, really opened that gate at that time. Because they knew we wanted to be a regional partner. We were going to try real hard to join and get, and really Ken will be Beacon Three, which will be synonymous, you know, within the county of going to help people. So I know that's been asked before. You know, Sam, it's going to be a great help to the firefighters, too. So we really looked at this process from a public safety department. And I know we needed more firefighters this year. But, you know, we believe it's going to take pressure off both entities and allow firefighters to go back to work and not respond to calls, allow the cops to go back into service to the citizens to be more viable. So, you know, we're here today because of a lot of good work. Ken, if I was to put a poster child, Kenneth, into what I was looking for as a Beacon, a police officer, Ken Owens fits the mold. You look at him in the dictionary. He is kind. He is mature. He deeply cares about the Fountain community through his 18 years of service here. He knows the Fountain community and people in it extremely well. He's a man of great character and great faith, and he's very excited to take on this task. So, you know, again, hats off. Thank you to Troy for helping us sort out some of the legal stuff. And the MOUs and MOAs and, you know, crossing the dots are always very difficult. And finally, just, you know, thank you to the city council. And this is what I referenced, I think, last week, you know, how well we've worked together. And ultimately, our job is to help our citizens and improve their quality of life. And, you know, Sharon, you know, you're very familiar with autism and, and dealing with those people. And we've had those instances. I always remember with a nine-year-old kid, you know, went missing that was highly autistic. And, you know, we searched to him and searched to him. And, you know, we found him, you know, we want this resources to be there to help the families that struggle because we know they struggle and to be very proactive and want to send the right people in. And then the contract that we paid for gives access to UC Health and all their facilities and all their follow-on resources. So we're looking forward to it. Great job, Missy. Great job, Ken. Thank you to everybody. I think it's going to be a great program. You know, probably maybe on a semi-annual basis, we'll have the Beacon come and report some Fountain-specific stats. We posted the job posting on our website and I'm sharing it with a couple of the groups I know in the region that do first responder mental health counseling. Because we really hope we get the right person. And, you know, we're willing to wait for that right person, you know. But we're also very, very excited to get this going. So thank you very much to everybody.
Okay. I think one other organization is El Paso County for being willing to partner with us on this.
Absolutely.
And providing that leadership, too. So a lot of different areas, we've been, we've been building that relationship with them and this is one of them. So thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Take care, guys. All right. Awesome. We will move on. We are going to move to item number 4B, Board Commission Committee Appointments. We have an appointment of three board members to the city's Economic Development Commission. I know Ms. Bailey is on. There she is. And yourself, needed. There you go.
There we go.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, council, and those with joining us tonight as well. Economic Development and Urban Renova Director, City of Fountain, presenting a three appointment board members to the Economic Development Commission for our city. Your applications are in your packet. Two of our applicants are renewal, reappointment-serving members. They've done us very well in their time already. And we look forward to their additional contributions going forth. That would be Phyllis Bayes and Dan Osinski. We have a third applicant who is Erica Alanas. She is serving as an inaugural term with the EDC. She's originally a Fountain native, but moved for her career, has gone traveled worldwide experiences and is an environmentalist and has come back to her home roots to continue servitude as she is also a civilian employment with the Air Force Base. So I think she's going to bring a lot of great resources to our board as well as maybe some of the auxiliary needs of intellect with what we're doing with Fountain Creek. And we're pleased to address her as an inaugural appointment to the board. I will say there is a typo on your commentary that does say her inaugural term expires in March 23. That's actually March 22. The inaugural term under the EDC bylaws is a one-year term of service initially. With that, I'll address any questions you may have. And I'm not sure if we have our appointments online with us tonight.
No, nobody's on tonight that I can see. So I will leave it up for any questions for council at this point. Okay, I'm seeing no questions. What would we like to do with these appointments? Ms. Duncan.
Staff proposes motion to appoint all three board applicants to the Economic Development Commission as terms specified.
Okay. Mr. Geek.
My second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of the three applicants. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. There you go, Ms. Bailey.
I appreciate it very much.
Okay. We'll keep moving forward. I'm glad we got some new people and always have others willing to join and share their expertise. So we'll move on to item number five. City Council agenda requests and announcements, and I'll start with Ms. Duncan. Anything tonight?
First, I would like to express my heartfelt condolences to our councilmember Estes and all of the families that have lost loved ones. Not that her family has done so, but those who have lost loved ones due to COVID all over the world, especially those families here in Fountain. We had the honor of witnessing the first citizen to get their COVID vaccination here in Fountain. And I thank all of the staff who was involved in that. That was very honoring to be there. There's no words to express to see the community coming together, doing what's right for the community so that we can get back to what we call our norm. We also attended the opening of the Care Share Food Bank. The place looks like the five-star grocery store. If there was a rating for a grocery store, I would call it a five-star. It was very nice, very dignified, bright, cheery, just an awesome place. Also, I attended, I listened today to the county commissioners and they went through a lot of the house bills that were put House uh bills that were put up above. That's gonna be put up uh before us. And what I would like to say about that is that. Uh, they called it, it was the with the Clean Commission. They had the, that they were gonna go through and clean up some of those. And I just would be glad when they do that because a lot of those. That were discussed, they were not self-funded. So I think that we should uh. You know, go through and make sure that. If we do as citizens. Uh, to go through those and look because a lot of those are not self-funded. And I think that is it.
Okay. All right, thanks. Um, Mr. Geek, anything?
I just have one thing that uh had a ESA meeting yesterday. And I was the vice chair, and I removed myself from that position. I'm still on the board. But to have continuity whenever I'm term limited, we went ahead and decided that that would be. Best if there was another person. And so Chief Girardin from Security is now the vice chair. I'm still on the board and still with it, but I'm. Removed myself from that position.
Okay. All right. Ms. Applegate?
Yeah. Just wanted to, I chaired the um Pike's Peak Regional Building Advisory Board. And we went over a lot of the construction during the period, and COVID has had no effect on the building in this area. It's just gone on. It seems to exceed every month, year after year, and month after month. And it's just keeps growing. It's amazing.
Yeah.
But Colorado Springs is especially growing.
Oh, yeah. Okay, um, Ms. Estes, anything?
I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Protown?
Yeah, I would also like to offer my heartfelt condolences to to Tamara and her family, and and know we're thinking about you. Sending uh thoughts and prayers in 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 your direction. Uh, I know that can be very difficult and uh. Please know that we're 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 thinking about you. Uh, we had the opportunity to go to the opening of the Sunnyside Market for the, you know, the Care and Share Food Bank at at the Walt Fortman Center. And and like teacher said, I mean, that that is just a. Nice, nice facility. In in younger, younger years, I've had opportunities. To uh take advantage of food banks. And frankly, it was kind of a cattle car situation back in those days. You just kind of stood in line, took what they gave you. Shut up about it and got out the door. And the thing I really like about the Sunnyside Market is. The emphasis on. Uh, kind of honoring and restoring some dignity to folks who would otherwise have it taken away. So I really appreciate that. And then was very excited to be able to go to the pop-up clinic, um, the opening for that. Uh, and the thing I liked about the pop-up clinic that we, the county was doing that all over. All over the county and, you know, doing that in our facility down here. The CDC has put out numerous statistics that communities of colors are. Disproportionately impacted by severe. Impacts of COVID. In some communities, up to forty percent more. People are hospitalized, if not. Um, passing away and to to have an opportunity. To get some emphasis and overcome some barriers to access. Or communities of color all through the county, I think, was frankly is the right step. And I was very excited to be able to be there and. Um, see that in action, see the first handful of people getting immunized and. Uh, looking forward to continuing success. From that. Um, otherwise, that's it.
Okay. Thank you, and Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I stopped by the clinic on Saturday, and I thought. Full. Every every booth was full, every person was full. It was flowing through so smoothly and um. And and they were so thrilled that they she took me through and showed me the WIC part and that Streets Department had gotten the bus stop up. Um, so they were really excited to see the bus station there for WIC being dropped literally at the door. When they come for WIC services. So they were saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. They. They didn't even know what was happening. It was a wonderful surprise. They heard this banging and clunking. Whoops. That's my son's ride. Um, anyways, they had all this banging and clunking going on, and all of a sudden, the next the park bench was there and it was done, and so that was really exciting. So they said, wanted to say thank you very much that. That the people will be just dropped right there. And that Fountain just really, really is concerned about people getting there and getting across eighty-five. That was, that was really important to them. So. Um, that's just kind of a big deal. Um, if you ever seen a mom or somebody in a wheelchair trying to get across the train tracks and across eighty-five, and and we've eliminated that barrier. So thank you. Um, but um, they were very friendly, or we got snacks and water and everything, and it was just going great. And I told our firemen that we're graciously sitting there. I hope you're really bored today. Because that means nothing's going on. Um, the legislative session's in full swing. Several questions I've had come up to me is um. Uh, when are they going to be over? People already wanna know already. The Senate is saying they wanna be done. By the usual time in May, maybe the second week in June. The House is not saying anything about when they might be done. So um, we will wait and see. Um, two hundred and fifty-eight bills. It dropped as of Monday morning. They're expecting another three to four hundred bills to be introduced. So it's going to be just as busy of a session as always. Um, the big bill that everybody's working on now that you're probably gonna hear a lot about is the transportation bill to do um with funding. Um, part of that, different lots of ideas are being thrown around for. Sustainable funding for uh ten million dollars worth of backlog project. There's more than that, but. Um, you're gonna hear a possible gas fee. So I've heard a lot of people saying to me. Didn't we pass Proposition One Seventeen last year that any new fee has to go to the voters? The answer is yes, except if it's going into a fund that's already established. So if they put the money into the H U T F fund, it does not have to go to the voters. So if you're getting that question, or you're wondering about it, or you wanna write to your uh state representative. Um, or give them a little email expressing your frustration over that, feel free. But that's the answer on that one. They're also pushing forward on banning styrofoam and plastic bags with a fee. Um, and my answer back to people is, who's adding up all these new fees? I'm not getting the answer. So I I feel like a lot of those fees are gonna fall on the people who can least afford them. So um, that's just a big concern. Because if we're gonna put a five cent per gallon gas fee on people, and we're talking about a potential fee for like Amazon and. And UPS and people doing deliveries and possibly an Uber fee for people using the road. Um, we're gonna be paying a lot of fees and um. I think people need to really stop and consider how all those things are gonna be adding up. So um, just keep your eyes and ears to the ground, and when you hear something. Man, keep your email addresses for your representatives who are supporting those bills. Um, you know, we need to really be talking to them. Some good things that are gonna come out, like the nine-one-one thing I was talking about, a possible grant program for that. I think that would be fantastic. Um, but um, I just have a lot of concerns when we keep talking about. Um, adding a lot of fees on for different things. So um. Anyways, so it's in full session. It's in full swing. So um, any questions, you can call me. Um, call Scott. We're trying to keep on top of a lot of stuff. So. Yeah.
Okay, um, on my end, I did attend the um, the. Vaccination event that was happening at the county, new county building in in Fountain, Colorado, and that was awesome. Um, that we were able to use that facility, and they got moving on that facility very rather quickly. So really excited that uh we have that and are offering services. Um, we also got a real quick tour. They're doing WIC out of there, some other of those. Things, so we're not having to have our citizens drive all the way up or find some way to get all the way up to um. Uh, Garden of the Gods. And so we have that here. Uh, we worked with Mountain Metro. To provide that link from Whitefield to over there, so people can, if they need, if they're. In South Colorado Springs, and they just wanna come here instead of going up there, they just take it here, grab one of our buses or take their bus. I don't know exactly how it works, but. They can get bussed right over there and and it's all working. So uh, great to see that. They had quite a bit of people that showed up, apparently. Um, we have now had one point one million people in Colorado vaccinated. Um, in in the state. Uh, El Paso County was um being short-changed. Uh, by the governor and his team in in vaccines. Um, thank you to Commissioner Gonzalez and the rest of the commissioners. Um, for really pushing back hard on the governor and. Uh, getting our vaccines back to us and the ones that that we were promised in the beginning. Um, we're able to, they're really trying to catch up and get the over seventy population. Uh, continue or done by this week or this, yeah, well, this week, by the end of February, from what I heard. Um, they wanna move into the next phase, which would be. If I, and and I may be a little off here. I saw it earlier today, now I can't remember. But the next phase would be sixteen to fifty-five-year-olds. Um, but you have to have two pre-existing conditions to get your shot. I think that's where they're hoping to get to in March. So what we're seeing and and one of the reasons why they did this for um. Uh, minorities over the weekend, um, because and with the um population over seventies. Um, is it just the lack of access to internet, lack of access to being able to. Sit there all day long and try to find something. I know my mom. Spent hours upon hours just trying to find an appointment somewhere she can get her and my dad in. And she's pretty well versed using a computer and that sort of thing. So. I know that's been a big issue, and a lot of the people that we talked to um over the weekend. That was the same thing. They just, they don't have the wherewithal to be able to get on the internet and figure out all how all that works. Uh, for a lot of families, they still don't even have the internet. So um, this was an attempt to be able to bridge that gap a little bit. We're thinking, and from what I've heard as well, that um, once we get into these uh younger populations. Obviously, a lot more versed with the internet, and the vaccines are gonna start rolling out. Rather quickly, and and I think they they're hoping to be a little bit further along than normal. So. Um, I do encourage you to get that if you if you're willing. Um, you know, I think the 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 thing that uh it will do is. Get us to that point of where we wanna be able to walk around and not have. Mass and not constantly be worried about those sort of things. So. Um, as I said, two weeks ago, at my first shot, uh, as my teacher role, I was able to get in and and. Uh, be safe for my students. And so um, again, I I encourage you, if you can, and and you're willing to, please go do that. Um, and and take care of that. Um. Again, thanks to Chief and everybody for the Beacon Program. Just so super excited about that. Um, as we move forward. I think that's all I had on my end. Um, I'm looking forward to this weekend. I am gonna be showing up to the um Youth Council Meeting. Is that correct on Sunday? Um, and speaking of the youth there and and doing that sort of thing. So. Uh, I think that's where we are currently. Um, do be careful cuz this weekend or tonight or tomorrow, we're supposed to get. Possibly three to six inches of snow. So just be careful on your way into work and things Wednesday and Thursday. Um, and see how that goes. So with that, let's go ahead and keep moving forward. We have public to be heard.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. I wanna make sure people understand that two-one-one system is now set up as a result of that concern with people on the computer, that they can call two-one-one. They can help them find an appointment, a place that can get on the phone or help them get an appointment. So.
Okay, that's two-one-one.
Two-one-one.
Okay, uh, public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. Um, we ask that you email your questions to City Clerk, part of the meeting. At councilmeetings@fountaincolorado.org, or council may not. Uh, council may not be able to provide a meeting answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. Um, out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. Um, I am seeing none on um. Online, and then I have some public here. Did you, any of you wanna? Hello for public comment? And we're getting no shake, so we are good. Um, we are going on. To our consent agenda, item number seven. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine. And will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member. Citizen or staff member um requests, which case we, uh, my item may be removed. Um, and considered separately. We have items A and B. I'm gonna let uh our utility director, Mr. Blankenship, come up.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Dan Blankenship, uh, Director of Utilities. Uh, I just asked that we uh remove uh item B. Uh, totally remove it from the agenda this evening. Uh, it's a four-party agreement. And two of uh our partners uh had some changes at the last minute. And so we would like to just bring that back after we uh are, they are able to address those items, and so it will. Be uh at the next, uh, one of the next couple meetings, we believe.
Okay, so you're just asking for that to be tabled to next week or just?
Actually, we'd just like to remove it from the agenda, and then we'll reschedule it once the uh, the agreement has been finalized with the other two, we have the other three parties.
Okay, so I think um it would be as easy, whoever makes the motion, just to uh know that that's being pulled at this moment, and we'll. Approve item A. Um, so with that, anybody?
Thank you.
Like to do that. Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. Uh, Mr. Law, or Mayor Protown?
Yeah, I moved to approve uh consent agenda, item seven A only.
And as a note, uh, item B has been pulled by the utility department. Uh, Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of our meeting minutes. Uh, Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Um, real quick, before you do leave, Mr. Blankenship, I did get a note from uh Ms. Huffman. Uh, from Mr. Rick via Ms. Huffman that um. He just wanted to thank utilities cuz millions of Americans were without power during the severe winter storm last week. In Texas, um, you know, I just passed along those things to. Our staff, obviously, who work tirelessly to ensure we always have power. Um, Carl and and the guys are just, you know, um, working so hard. And are, do you know, did we have to send anybody out to go help? Um, re- reconnect anybody? I know we've done that in the past.
Yeah, I, uh, we have been not been called for any type of mutual aid.
Okay.
Um, and we haven't had any issues. And so I am working on uh a piece that I'll uh, kind of a press release. To kind of give some folks some ideas of uh what our, what our system's like and and what we might anticipate. But. We're very fortunate to be where we're at, um, and certainly not uh in in a place where they had such as, you know, severe. Uh, uh, issue with uh, with the weather and and the response to that. So.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're, we're really do, we're doing well and and lucky to do, be there.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, go ahead.
With that power outage and it being in Texas and all the way up to the middle of the country. I know that we buy our power from some other places. And that not being that, we don't get affected by that stuff, right?
That is, that is correct. Yeah, we're, we're, our supplier is uh, our primary supplier is uh XL Energy, uh Piesco. Um, and they are not part of the, the Texas uh system. Uh, or uh the Southwest Power Pool, which is the center part of the country. Um, so we're, we're independent uh of that, uh, and so. We were not impacted by by anything that happened in the center part of the country.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Blankenship. Okay, we'll keep moving. Item eight, old business, second reading of ordinance number. Oh, ordinance number one-seven-five-nine and ordinance amending chapter one-seven-point-three-one, section one-seven. Point seven-one-zero, meanings defined. It says, Ms. Martinez, are you on the line or who's taking this one?
Mayor, this is Todd. Kristi is on. Um, she should be joining us shortly.
Oh, there she is. Hold on, let me see. I'm gonna have to un, no, she just needs to unmute herself. There you go.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Council, uh, Kristi Martinez, City of Fountain Planning Department. Uh, there have been no changes to ordinance seventeen fifty-nine, which was to amend chapter seventeen thirty-one of the Fountain Municipal Code by adding a definition.
Okay, thank you. No changes, uh, as noted. Um, any questions, comments, concerns from council? Okay, uh, we can move forward with the motion. Uh, Ms. Duncan?
I motion to approve ordinance seventeen fifty-nine, our second reading.
Okay, and Mayor Protown?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Ms. Huffman?
Mayor Ottega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. Item nine, uh, new business, nine A, no items removed from our consent agenda. Move on to item nine B, resolution. Two-one dash zero-zero-nine, review and adoption of resolution amending the City of Fountain. Strategic Plan twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Trilch?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and the public. I'm here this evening to brief a proposed resolution to amend. The City of Fountain Strategic Plan. Uh, during the January twenty twenty-one City Council Strategic Implementation Update. Uh, council provided guidance to staff to provide some potential amendments. and removals from the 2019 to 2021 strategic plan. And so I'm here to present those this evening and ask for your approval. We have four proposed changes to the strategy, three additional strategic objectives and one objective that would be rescinded. First is in the area, the strategic priority of transportation infrastructure. Recommend the addition of this following strategic objective. I'm going to go ahead and read it for the for the public that's out there, both here and and online for the record. So this new strategic objective by September 1st, 2021, the city manager will report to city council and the public regarding single hauler waste removal options within the city's jurisdiction. These options will be presented pending completion of a comprehensive study of municipal needs and multiple opportunities for public input and feedback. A city council will provide guidance to city staff based on these options. That is a proposal addition, additional strategic objective. In the area of recreation, first recommendation is to is to rescind strategic objective RF4, which was an objective that directed staff to to work with the Fountain Valley Recreation Center, do a review and reset of the Fountain Valley Recreation Center Committee, excuse me. Guidance was provided to staff by council at the review session to to rescind that objective. So we propose that this evening. We want to add two additional objectives. One is that no later than June 1st, 2021, the City Parks and Recreation Director will initiate discussions with developers on creating options for various recreation venues dispersed throughout the Fountain community. The City Parks and Recreation Director will provide an update to city council and the public on the results of those discussions no later than November of 2021. The second proposed addition in the area of recreation is that no later than by, no later, excuse me, than December 31st, 2021, the City Parks and Recreation Director will complete renovations of the Fountain Skate Park at Metcalf Park in order to enhance access capability and availability of this recreation venue to the Fountain community. Subject to any of your questions or questions for the public regarding these amendments, I recommend that you approve the resolution.
Okay, the only one I want to make a comment on is around recreation because you know, we were prior to COVID and we even have a board member here, a community member here. Prior to COVID, you know, we were really working gangbusters to figure out how can we possibly get a recreation center here, joint with Whitefield School District, working with the senior center, doing those types of things. And of course, the pandemic hit, which a lot of people really just thought at the time that, you know what, watching people lose jobs, watching people scraping by because now I'm not working because I can't go to work because it's a very public place, those types of things. And if we want to all of a sudden then bring a rec center in, it's one of those things that we just can't pay for out of our coffers that I know everyone thinks we have or these silver lined wallets and purses that we have as well. You know, we we simply can't build a huge facility like that, also fund it, also insure, also 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 also. The one thing we have to make sure is that we can take care of that once we were able to build it. In order to do that, we knew we would have to go to the voters and say, how is this worth it to you? And are you willing to to pay up? It's a it's a big ask that we've heard a lot of over the last few years. And that was the, I was going to be kind of where the the rubber hits the road. But we know in thinking about that, that we just can't come to people during and in the middle and towards the end of a pandemic, asking now, can you give some extra money for something like this? So we're having to step back a little bit, rethink our process on this and how are we going to do it? I also want people to know that, you know, while the big pie in a sky dream right now is is put on hold, it's not it's not being put away. It's being put on hold and we're also looking at other options that that may be out there. There've been a few thrown out on the table, nothing definite, but we want to definitely start going out and seeing how we can leverage some other monies and leverage some of those things that we were planning on doing anyway. But we will have to think out of the box with this one. So you know, we are going to keep plugging away on this. There are other things around recreation that we're doing. The skate park is is a big exciting thing and and we want to update and rejuvenate that for the the folks that use that. And I think that's a worthy thing because it's used often. And so we'll continue pushing that. And and so the rec facility is not off the table. It's just on hold while we look at some other options. And hopefully we can come back to it. But we got to get out of this pandemic before we start asking people, hey, do you mind pitching in for someone? Possibly they don't even have a great job right now. And they've been able to not been able to find good steady work and quarantines and everything else. Let's just get through this first and then we'll we'll get back to it. But stuff's still happening. I just want to put that out there for for the public. I think we're in a good spot with the rest of this plan and 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 for public to know that we're we're starting to ramp up so we can update and and get moving on the on the second, basically, strategic plan. And so it's been awesome having this as a part of our wheelhouse and and guiding us in our budget decision and guiding us in in the way we move forward as a community. I do ask that that public are in tune and pay attention because when we start asking for input, this is when that that's that opportunity for you to give us that input and and moving forward and in in the city. So with a new council coming on here at the end of the year and some different visions and different ideas and different things are going to be coming to the board. I I want to give us a, give those folks a good standing ground to work from and 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 pushing forward as a community. And we've done some great things. I want to I want to that next group of people to be able to continue that forward. So with that, I'll have any other questions from or comments? If not, we can move forward. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you so much. And that was, it was really a great discussion, I believe, we had at the work session.
Right.
A lot of people, a lot of ideas and really firmly told everybody, we don't want, we're not putting the recreation center, we're not stopping it, we're just putting it on hold. We go at it from a different way, you know. Every, you know, like the mayor said, y'all want the big expensive building, but maybe right now isn't the right time. I'm really thankful we don't have to clean and maintain a big empty building right now that nobody can use. So that would be kind of a hard thing to do. And then everybody's going to want refunds for their membership, you know, so. You know, it was, timing was bad, but it's better before we started breaking ground on it. So I think there's a lot of ideas. If you have ideas, creative ideas, please call Sylvia, call his staff, let us know, call your council members. And no idea is a bad idea. And then it just means we're regrouping for a little while. So it is definitely, it's on hold. We were very firm that the word is on hold. Not not gotten rid of. So please, if you see that out on Facebook and social media, it's on hold. Okay.
If I could just emphasize that too, Councilmember Thompson, that we have a dedicated webpage regarding the strategy. So you can go to the city website, look at that webpage. It has the actual briefing that was provided to council in January that covers that. We did a strategic plan update video at the end of the year. That's on the website as well. The actual strategy is there. So any citizen who wants to learn more about the strategic plan, go to fountaincolorado.org and look for the strategic plan and it's all there.
Right. And keep an eye on the website because when the dates start coming out of our public meetings for this next round of strategic planning, it's it's your opportunity to be a part of it. We're obviously going to be able to provide more options in the virtual realm and and those sort of things. So those who are out there that love to criticize and 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 love to be the the armchair quarterback, here's your opportunity to actually put put, you know, put your money where your mouth is, so to speak. And so you know, we we hear a lot of complaints, we hear a lot of criticisms, but oftentimes those people don't ever input. So this is that time. And and if you want to see where the direction of our city is going and understand why we're going in these directions rather than than assuming you know, this is probably the best point and and best way to figure that out. Because there's a lot of thought. I know our public too, who who are very consistent in showing up, they know where we're at as a community and they know the reasons why we do things and the processes and and it's not just a whim type of a choice. So and that strategic plan is our living, breathing document of how we how we move in the city. And again, I I encourage anyone who who wants to armchair quarterback that this is your opportunity. Let's 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 see you really put it in the action because there's a lot of people who put a lot of time and effort into this to include citizens who who give up of their time. They they come and they they be a part of this and and they work just as hard as the rest of us to build a good foundation that that the staff and and council can move from. So I do encourage that. Anybody else? No, it's okay. If not, we do need a motion. Oh, did you? Nope, are you there? Okay, I'm sorry, I can't, Mr. Trilch is like really tall.
Shorten yourself a little bit.
All right. Mayor Protown, go ahead.
Well, I guess I'll move to adopt resolution 21-009.
All right, and Ms. Duncan? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of our amendments. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
I vote yes with a thank you to everybody who is in on all those meetings. You know, investigating all this and all the ideas and thank you for all your time. And it was not wasted time. Those ideas are still going to be on hold. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item, thank you, Mr. Trilch.
Thank you, Council.
All right, item nine C, first reading of ordinance number 1760 and an ordinance an ordinance repealing and reordaining section 9.04.070, furnishing cigarettes or tobacco products to minors, sale of cigarettes or tobacco products in vending machines, purchase of cigarettes or tobacco products by minors of chapter 9.40, offenses by or against minors of Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare of the Fountain Municipal Code by increasing the age of minors from 18 to 21. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. And I'd really just like hearing the mayor talk that much. So thank you. Yeah. I, this is a bit of a housekeeping item. As you, as you may remember, the federal government changed the age to purchase tobacco from 18 to 21. I think it was signed into law in late 2019 or 2020. And in March, I think of last year, you all changed the Fountain Municipal Code, specifically the liquor code, and we forgot to include these changes to the offenses against minors to make that change in our code. So this is just sort of cleaning up that that oversight. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Okay. No, I know we were, I think, one of the first communities to really start hammering the sale of cigarettes towards minors and and it was, I was surprised that it was as easy as it was for them to get cigarettes and legally. I know that there's always going to be the the kids can figure out to get it. We're, that's just, you know, we wish those who do buy it for them were a little more mature, but that's just where we live. But
And this is for tobacco, nicotine, vaping products.
So it's a whole gamut. Awesome. All right. Any questions?
Good.
No, okay. See none from public? Any questions? Nope. Okay. Then what would council like to do? Mr. Applegate?
Yeah. I move to approve. Oh, there it is. Ordinance 1760.
And Mr. Geek? Okay, we have a motion and second to approve ordinance 1760, first reading. Ms. Huffman.
Mayor Ortega, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protown Lauer, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Geek, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you. We are on to correspondence, comments and ex officio reports. And let me see who's on the line. I think we have Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything tonight. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Evans, I know you talked with I say Health Director Wayland with the El Paso County Health and just pass along our thanks, you know, for obviously for getting us this building that which you and and Sam worked really hard to get, you know, and pushed back on Tower Springs a lot to get that building in Fountain. But also her leadership and 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 just thinking about, again, I think the county has been doing a wonderful job of trying to ensure that we're a part of things regionally and and things like the Beacon Program, things like the the Health Department Building, all those things really kind of come to fruition and 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 they they are ensuring ensuring that that, you know, Fountains recognize and you know, I know Commissioner Gonzalez and and Mr. Vanderworth, who's not even our representative, but still thinks the Fountain is is a big, big part of the county that, you know, just pass our thanks along to her and then thank her for her leadership in in promoting that event last weekend.
Absolutely, Mayor. I'll do that. And just to pass along, she really appreciated the three of you attending that vaccination clinic. And she expressed beforehand, she really wanted to take that opportunity to thank all three of you and your support. So I will, I will let her know, but I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks a lot. Let me just go through the list here of folks that I have. And Mr. Trilch.
Yes, good evening again, Mayor and Council. Just to kind of pile on regarding this pop-up clinic. So I received a call Saturday afternoon by the El Paso County Public Health Communications Director who just wanted to convey again their thanks for the partnership and to convey that they had vaccinated over 900 people in two days there. And so they were very, very pleased with how that came out. And and she said that, you know, she would love to do more events with Fountain. So I've got some follow up with her to actually schedule some things on the calendar between public health and Fountain. So I think just a great event again and and really appreciate council support and coming out for that. Okay, I also wanted to take a moment to update you on the Military Appreciation Banner Program. So you may have noticed on Highway 8587, we've got the banners up. There are 10 out there this year. We had some that were that are up there that were up there last year. We had the idea to reach out to folks who had sponsored banners in the previous year and see if they wanted to have their banner put back up again. And so most took us up on that. And so now really, if you look from the bridge coming over Fountain Creek, heading north towards Fire Station One, past the PD, you can really see those banners now. It looks really nice. I think it's it's kind of starting to look the way that we had envisioned it.
It's funny, I noticed that today. It was, I didn't even think about it, but I just happened to know that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So so I think that, you know, it, we've got a good program there and and I just wanted to read an email actually that I received from one citizen who sponsored a banner for his son, Lance Corporal Cole Rife and from the United States Marine Corps. And he wrote me and said, thank you so much for all the help in getting the banner with my son's name. I drove by today and it was simply put, awesome. I am proud to live and have raised him here and want to thank the City of Fountain for what you make available for the community. Thank you again so much. So that's just, you know, I think some feedback that all you needed to hear for what is turning out to be a nice program and a way to honor our many military service members in the community.
Okay.
And so subject to your questions, that's all I have for this.
No, I would just encourage those who are interested, check the website, all the information's there to get your own and all branches of military, we want to recognize those people and and yeah, it's exciting to see that up there. So thanks. Mr. Johnson?
Another for me tonight.
Okay. Chief?
Sir, just very briefly, thank you again. A lot of good work here tonight with the strategic plan. Everyone's worked very hard on that. The Beacon Program approval, those are all positive steps for our community. You know, I try and stay very active in suicide prevention within the community and the first responder community and military community. There's no doubt in my mind, we'll sit here next year, a year from now, once we get the beacon active and there'll be people that'll be alive in our community because they got the help they needed. Some of them be military, some of them be civilians, one's too many. But there's no doubt we'll save a few next year. So thank you for that. And you know, that to us and those family members will be invaluable. So thank you.
Okay, great, awesome. Let me go through the list here. Mr. Blankenship, did you have anything further from utilities? Okay, great, awesome. Let me go through the list here. Mr. Blankenship, did you have anything further from utilities?
Nothing further, sir. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to look to Ms. Godwin or Paul, if you have anything from IT.
Nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Huffman?
Nothing tonight, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and quickly run through council. I'll start with Ms. Duncan.
Uh, as you stated, Mayor, the Fountain Council will be meeting with, uh, will be meeting with staff members. So it's very exciting. It's very exciting for them. I have been getting a couple of emails asking, is it okay for to, to continue to submit applications? A yes, the answer is yes. Please to continue to send applications in for the Fountain Youth Council. We do have a couple of outstanding seniors that will be graduating this year. So we want to keep our numbers up. So please, if you're interested to submit application. Also, the El Paso County Virtual Free Legal Clinic, they have, in our local libraries, it's the one here in Fountain, they have limited access, but they have a volunteer attorney and you could call and use this service at the library here. You call the library and they will sign you up to contact the virtual legal representative. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Duncan. Mr. Geek? Yes, I would like to tell Mrs. Estes that I, Miss Estes, that I, my thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. Okay, Mr. Applegate?
I'd like to thank our utility department for being so diligent that we don't get involved in some of the other things that go on and that especially that our power doesn't depend on wind generators. My goodness, almost all of them froze up, poor people. But that's all, just thanks a lot. We appreciate what you do.
One hundred percent. And if you drive off of Lincoln Market Chapel, you'll see the new substation going up. So very excited about that. Miss Estes?
Just want to tell everybody, thank you. It's been a hard week for myself and my family and we appreciate everybody's thoughts and prayers for us. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. And again, once again, I do offer at least my help and I'm sure everybody else will speak the same. If you need anything, just let us know. Mayor Proton?
Nothing further for me. Thanks.
Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, the only other thing I want to mention is that website, please, any kind of information that we have going on of stuff that's going on in the city, website's going to get there. You know, we, we, that's a resource that I think a lot of people don't really look at and use. But it's definitely a, a resource that has all the information and other stuff too that, that, that is worthy for the community. We're going to try to list it there. Please don't rely on Facebook and, and some of those other venues is we don't, if, if we happen to put something that might hurt someone's feelings, they may cut us out and, and delete us from having a page. So the, the webpage for fountaincolorado.org is up and running and, and working well. So please look for any information there and, and anything that you want to see in the City Fountain. With that, we do not have executive sessions. We were going to do that, but just with logistics and people in and out, we're going to push that off to the next meeting in two weeks, which we will see you all on. It says February twenty-third. I think it's March ninth, actually, will be our next council meeting. Have a good evening.